I call the hybrid in-person virtual meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board to order. It is 7:01 PM on Monday, September 14th, 2020. I am in Conference Room C of the Fisher Administration Building, 12121, West North Avenue, with board members participating in person and remotely via the video conferencing platform Zoom. Due to active health and safety concerns associated with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, public health emergency, we will begin with the moment of silence. Ms. Newman, please call the room.
Mr. Domon?
Here.
Ms. Fraley?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Muefeld?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rollin?
Here.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Here. Good evening, everyone. We will next move into public comment on any non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Do we have any public comment on any items that are not agendaed for this evening?
There are no hands raised in the Zoom meeting.
The first one is a really fun agenda item, Superintendent Action Item. This is our student representatives who will be joining us as members of the School Board for this coming year. Sharon, this one is yours to read.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes, Sean?
Just wanted to flag the comment on the Zoom chat. Looks like Nora is trying to get in, but the door is locked. Oh, she's in. Okay, great.
Sean Rollin saving the day from afar. Thank you, Sean. Nora, glad you made it in. So, a little bit of background on the student, I want to start with a little background on the student School Board reps. Three years ago, the seven of us who are still sitting on the School Board today approved the addition of student School Board representatives from East and West High Schools. And so, last year and the year before that was the first two years that happened. I think, I feel comfortable speaking for myself and maybe the board, that the comments, that the feedback, the perspective, the questions, really added to the richness of our discussions and debate as we have grappled with a whole variety of different issues. So, the student voice has been, I think, really important to us to see more broadly and more deeply the issues that we're discussing and making decisions on. And while students don't have an opportunity to vote, I think their voice on the Board and their advocacy is a really essential part of what we do. Cannot be happier that this was taken up three years ago and that it continues to happen today. We have four students from East and West High Schools here with us this evening, and they are going to be taking their oath. So, Sharon?
Ah, yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I am very pleased to read this motion. It is recommended that the School Board approve the appointment of Elizabeth Cady, Mira Gageria, Aiden Jones, and Nora Romo Anger as the student representatives to the School Board, and I so move.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Domon. Any board discussion or comment on the assignment? Seeing none, Ms. Newman, please call the room.
Mr. Domon?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
Ms. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yeah.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes. Congratulations to the four of you. We are excited to have you join us. Our next agenda item is for each of you to take the oath of office. School Board Clerk Steve Domon will administer the oath.
Please have them let down and stand where they are.
We'll have them stand where they are, and you can stand where you are.
The four of you can stand. Please have them repeat after me. First will be your name. So, aye, say your name. Raise your hand. Aye, say your name.
Aye, even don't.
Having been appointed to the office of student representative on the Wauwatosa School Board, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for the application process. Sharon, thanks to you for your role in the selection process as well. You as student School Board members are all welcome to stay this evening. If you've got other places to go, you're welcome to.
Last time.
And Mr. Domon needs signatures. If you want to pause for a moment. Yeah.
Can you have them come up here? I'm going to leave it right here. Can we put one at a time inside?
Any public comment on the oath of office?
To make sure it's all right. We'll get you a new printed copy done in a second.
Yeah. No worries. Just leave it. I'll just send them around. Okay. We'll redo it.
Okay.
I can calm down. Are they going to stay? Because I can run back to my desk and print a new one.
Sure.
What?
We'll get you a new copy. She's going to go print one out right now. We'll have to wait for a second. Well, there's probably two, right? Because that one wasn't signed correctly. So, it's Elizabeth and.
Well, Mira should still be there.
Yeah, but it's on the wall.
Congratulations to all of you.
Yes.
Our next item on the agenda, and it's our, all four of you staying. I promise that we won't go till one. I should say.
I was just going to say.
I'm not going to promise anything about how late we're going. Because then I'll. The next item on our agenda is the Distinguished Service Award recipients. At the district opening day in-service, seventeen honorees received engraved plaques as recipients of the 2020 Distinguished Service Award. The School Board presented the award for exemplary service and dedication to the district. These individuals were nominated by staff members, parents, and students. Nominations were reviewed by School Board members, and the following were selected as recipients. The first is Diane Blocker, Madison Title I Interventionist. Tracy Karas, Wilson Instructional Equity Coach. Deana Foster, Longfellow Social Studies. Nick Hughes, Wauwatosa East Principal. Sarah Kimmel, East Math Teacher. Patty V Leon Matern, Madison Special Education Assistant. Mary McElwee, Washington Occupational Therapist. Guillermo Moreno, Madison Elementary Building Lead. Amy Nolan, Underwood School Counselor. Sarah Oliver, East Library and Media Specialist. Krishna Robinson, Bell R. Phillips English Teacher. Jessica Schmidt, Lincoln ESL. Lori Simancheck, Eisenhower Orchestra. Terry Summers, East Administrative Assistant. Kristy Toy, West Administrative Assistant. Sue Walzack, Wilson Social Worker. Mary White, Lincoln PE. Congratulations to all of you. You've done exceptional work over many, many years, and we appreciate your commitment and dedication to the students and schools here in Wauwatosa. Any comments from any board members? Dr. Earl?
So, normally, we recognize all of these people on the opening day, and it was, we had a video made to recognize for our virtual opening day. I thought it was well received, really well done, but no video or no simple recognition goes far enough to show our appreciation for the work all of these people have done for the district and what they continue to do. These are just a number of our quality educators that are doing great things for kids every day.
Thank you to all of you. Congratulations. Next up on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which of the board members would like to see removed for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Fraley. May I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions from the Board on the consent agenda?
No questions. I would just like, again, maybe at the end of, maybe end of September, to take a look at the resignations and to see the data again in terms of like the rationale for people leaving, so that we have a better understanding of why they left, where they went, et cetera.
Any community comment or questions on the consent agenda?
No hands raised in the Zoom meeting.
Thank you, Deana. Ms. Newman, please call the room.
Mr. Domon?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
Ms. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yeah.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. Our next set of items are under Superintendent Reports. The first is the presentation of the Wauwatosa School District Dashboard. We're joined by data analyst, district teaching and learning data analyst, district assessment coordinator, Michelle Anderson, a favorite of the Board's. We really like her presentations if you're watching at home. Super smart and insightful, and has done great work on these dashboards. We're excited to hear it some more about her. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. All right, so, two weeks ago, I know you heard a lot about the metrics that were used to develop our scorecard, and today you get to see the actual data that we have put together for families, so they can see how our scorecard is calculated. So, the district website, what we've done is we've embedded those dashboards to make it really easy for families to find. So, if you go to Family Resources and then Reopening 202021, that will take you to our reopening page. The first, ooh, little sensitive. Okay, the first item you will see is where our current phase into learning environment is, and then just below that, you're going to see our dashboards which have been embedded. So, as you heard last time, to build our metrics dashboard, we connected to some publicly available data on the Wisconsin Department of Health Services Open GIS Data Portal. We are also connecting to data for test positivity rates on each of the county's dashboards, and we're also using our internal data from ASOP, Skyward, and Infinite Campus to help populate these dashboards. So, to grab the data, we have used an open API, so that we can pull in the data each day fairly easily. It helps to ensure that our data is accurate and up to date. DHS updates their data every day at 2:00 PM, and throughout the day, I'm updating with various bits of data from the district as well as from the county dashboards. We update our dashboard here by 3:00 PM daily, Monday through Friday, with a few exceptions. So, the dashboards have been set up with different tabs, and you can see those tabs right up at the top here. We have district, community, county, state, and then I've just added a little Data Fact tab. So, at the district level, these are our internal metrics. For each of the dashboards, you have a little dropdown that allows you to look at a different school, or you can select a different date. So, this is historical data if people are interested in going back to look at it. The data that is populated here is based on the metrics scorecard that was established by our medical and public health advisory group. The first bits of data here are the number of students and staff who have a positive COVID-19 diagnosis, and then we also have the number of students and staff in quarantine currently. One of the metrics for our school data has been our student attendance rates. So, we have for both Phase Until Learning and our TOSA-connected students, the attendance rates for the month of September, and we'll just keep rolling that as we go through the school year. For our teaching staff, we were asked to look at the percent of unfilled teaching positions. So, for our first week of school, you can see that our unfilled teaching position rate was less than 1% for the district overall. I've also included a teacher attendance rate, so that you could see what that data looks like as we move along.
Michelle, could you just talk about the difference between those two? I know that was a topic on the committee meeting of unfilled teaching positions and teacher attendance rate. I think that's a little.
Sure. So, with the attendance rate, that includes all teachers who have been absent and whether they have a position that has been filled by a sub or not. So, basically, there's someone in that classroom teaching that day. The unfilled attendant teaching position means that we did not have a sub to fill that position that day, whether it was one of our building subs or a colleague substitute. So, the next metric I'm going to look at is our county dashboards. These, again, have those dropdown menus, so that you can look at the five different counties that are being included in the calculation for our scorecard. To the right, I've also added a hyperlink, so that if you would like to know more about the data, you can go here to read Wisconsin DHS's about the Data 101 Fact. There are four boxes here, and each of those boxes is aligned to the community data metrics. So, the first box is the caseload. And on here, what we have is, the blue line is the 14-day new positive case rate per 100,000 people that is being used to calculate our scorecard. Everything here you can hover over, and it will pop up a tooltip that gives you more information about that data point. I've also included descriptions of the data, so that people have an easier way to interpret what it means. It's sort of a sentence interpretation of what this data means. The bars behind include the daily rates. I've tried to build in as much transparency with these dashboards as possible, so that if somebody wants to go in and see what the underlying data is that we use to calculate all of our metrics, they can certainly go in and use the data that is available here to recalculate it. We've also included a line here that shows when our state mask mandate took effect, and you can see that it's had a positive impact on our caseload over time. On the right, we have the positive test rate. So, for our metrics, we are looking at the percent of new daily tests that are positive, and we have a seven-day rolling average for that. The orange line here represents the seven-day rolling average from Milwaukee County. As you roll over each of these items, you get that tooltip once again. The bars behind represent the number of people who on each day tested positive or tested negative per DHS's data from the state. Down below, we have the trend data. So, this is a week-over-week percent change in data. It is calculated exactly the same way that DHS is calculating their trend data on the activity-level dashboards on the state COVID-19 website. So, you can see when you hover over that you have the percent change from the current week to the previous week, I'm sorry, from the previous week to the current week, and then you have the 95% upper and lower confidence intervals on that. We've included a verbal description of when the data is increasing, decreasing, or stable. Finally, we have hospital capacity. So, for our scorecard, we are using the percent of beds in use by COVID-19 patients in Milwaukee County. The blue line down here represents that data. You can hover over everything once again in order to get a better description of the data and more information. The gray bars right behind represent the 14-day sum of new hospitalizations per DHS's data. For the community data, we have the community of Wauwatosa and Milwaukee County excluding Wauwatosa. To calculate our community-level data, we use DHS's data by Census Trac. We just stitched together all the Census Trax that make up Wauwatosa and Milwaukee County without Wauwatosa, and it presents the same exact data here. So, you have the caseload, positive number of cases, the trend, and the hospital capacity. We are working on creating the positive test rate data for Wauwatosa, so I'm currently working with the Health Department right now to generate that data. To add context to all of the data that we're looking at, I've included the state data. And within that, you can see what our overall trend in the state of Wisconsin have been. Of course, we have a little bit of an alarming increase here, since this is primarily Dane County here, I believe. On some of the dates, you will see a little data note. If something unusual happened with the data on that date, I do try to put a note in just as a little explainer. So, on 9/4, there was, a few days earlier, sort of a shutdown of the Wisconsin Electronic Data Surveillance System that prevented reporting for a few days of new test results, and so all those test results got lumped into 9/4. So, it wasn't a true spike that day, but rather a few days worth of new cases lumped together. So, if people are interested in seeing where this data comes from, we do have a link here to our data source with the Wisconsin Department of Health Services Open GIS. And this is really cool that DHS put this out here. It has all the state, county, and census-level data that has been released up till now. It is updated every day at 2:00 PM. There's a handy little API over here, so you can live connect to the data if you want with the web connector, or you can download the data as a spreadsheet if you would like to play with it yourself. One last thing that I have been working on adding to our dashboards to round them out is a Data Fact. So, I'm still working on, I'm really filling this out this week, but what the Data Fact is going to include is information on where our data comes from, how we calculate each of our metrics, where people can find more information, when it is updated, and any other frequently asked questions that we receive. We'll just keep posting them right here. So, that is a quick run through of our dashboards. I hope everyone enjoys them. I've certainly enjoyed making them, so.
Questions and comments from the Board?
Just a huge thank you, I mean, for making it so clear and understandable and giving all the little notes. Hugely helpful to be able to direct people to this.
One of the things that we very much, from the outset of this, have been committed to is to try to be as transparent and straightforward, sharing the data that we have, and communicating at every cost, when anything does something forward. Thank you so much. Sean, Sharon, or Mike Meyer, any comments or questions from either of the three of you?
No, it's quite thorough. Thank you. And we'll be able to make the decisions based on the data that we see. I guess I have one other question. How, how easy is it to add data points to it if we should ask for one?
So, what the data point is? Do you have an example?
No, not at this time. I'm just, I mean, I'm just asking if we wanted it, if something progresses and we want another data point, is it, is it easy to modify the dashboard?
It could be, and it might not be. So, unfortunately, it's hard to say without an example. I would say, if something comes up, I will give you a very honest assessment at the time of how easy or how difficult it could be.
Yes, it is. One thing that I've been learning with COVID-19 data is that everybody's doing it a little bit differently, and it's difficult to make sure that you're making apples-to-apples comparisons, and that we really truly understand the meaning and the definition of the data that we are collecting and reporting on. So, that's always very important to me, that we really truly understand what it is we're reporting out on here, and that we are confident that what we're reporting is as accurate as possible and as well-defined as possible.
And I was hearing one little trick. I was having trouble seeing it on my phone, and then I went down to the bottom of the data and clicked on the word tableau, and it opens it up in a new window that you can move around and see everything on your, on a mobile device if you want. So, I know some people are asking about that, so.
Yeah.
Little shortcut.
Right here. I will keep working on trying to make this more mobile-friendly.
That works.
Yeah.
Any community comment or questions on this item?
Yes. Eric Peterson, please state your name and address, and you have the microphone.
Yeah, this is Eric Peterson, 12016 West Hadley Street. Great job on being as transparent as possible. I'm, can you speak just a little bit more about the caseload counts and specifically how you wait the communities to get a higher than 100 caseload? When you look at the Health Department website, the Wauwatosa, it's definitely less than 100 in the last 14 days.
I agree. So, for me, the way that I calculate this, and there's a little bit of a difference between DHS and how the county does it. So, one difference is the county is reporting a positive case on the day that the test is resulted, whereas the county is counting a positive case on the day the test was administered. So, that is one little difference. So, that can account for about 24 to 48 hours of difference right there. Another difference that I find between our data and the county's data is that they're often including four days of preliminary data in their count. often including four days of preliminary data in their count. And in that preliminary data, the count of new cases is really tiny. So if you look at the gray bars that they're using to calculate that, there are very few. And I find that that really tends to skew the data downwards and underestimate the number of current cases compared to where I feel the true value would be.
Any other questions or comments?
There are no more hands raised in the Zoom meeting.
Thank you, Michelle. The level of joy that that brings to the board is high. Next up is the Education Foundation of Wauwatosha.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can, welcome.
Awesome. Thank you. A little different than the last time I attended, so thanks. I think I'm going to share a screen real quick, so hopefully you'll be able to see the presentation I have in a minute. Hopefully, maybe. Can you see that? Nope, except for I've never shared anything on my computer and it wants permission. Joyous. If it ends up being too much of a pain, I'll just speak to it, but I think this looks.
There we go.
Perfect, thank you. So good evening to Dr. Jessa Bager and all the members of the Wauwatosha School Board, District School Board. I appreciate the opportunity to join me this evening and provide an annual update on behalf of the TOSHA EFW. For those of you who I did not know, my name is LaShonda Hill. I am the president of the TOSHA EFW, and each year, we're just thankful for an opportunity to be able to join you and provide an update on behalf of our organization. So as most of you are aware, the EFW's been working since 1990 with a commitment to the students and educators of this community. As an organization, we're determined to ensure everything we do focuses on the North Pole of this mission statement that you see before you, and that's to promote excellence, innovation, and opportunities for the Wauwatosha Public Schools by raising and awarding money for educational initiatives which prepare students for success by enhancing and enriching their learning experience. And that's something that we really just do hold, you know, true to everything that we try and do and make sure that that is the focus of all of our activities. For the 2020 to 2021 school year, we're pleased to share that we awarded 13 grants totaling just over $66,000, bringing our 30-year tally to 406 grants funded totaling nearly $900,000 in support of the programs and resources to enhance the experiences with students in our community. And that's thanks to the innovation and ideas of the educators from this community. For me, it's been an amazing thing to just be a part of this, and we know that this year it looks like no other, right? We know we have to offer some flexibility to teachers because things that they thought that they would be able to put in their classrooms last year look a little bit different now. So we're offering that flexibility in the vein of still making sure we can do things in support of our students and our educators. One of the exciting pieces of news that I just really am happy to be able to share is that a few weeks ago, I personally sat on a number of your school board meetings, some of those that lasted until 1:00 a.m. Hopefully, you guys don't have to go that long tonight. But I listened to the challenges that were faced by yourselves as representatives of the school board and by Dr. Erdl with trying to meet the needs of the students across the district during the dynamic and kind of constantly evolving time that we're all in. I can say I don't envy the position that any of you are in for the amount of time and effort that's needed to try and just understand and make the right decisions on behalf of our school district. But in response to that, our board really saw a unique opportunity as we had recently discussed what we could do to commemorate our 30 years of existence. And through a series of messages, I was able to connect with Dr. Erdl and understand specific needs that would just help to ease the burden that was faced by the district. And we were really happy to be able to help fund additional Chromebooks that were needed to fill a gap that was recognized during this time. And so our goal was really simple. How do we help the needs of the district without creating an added burden with red tape and bureaucracy and another form or application that's needed? And we were just happy to be able to do that. So we know our donors would agree with us in that this is a great use of our funds. This is exactly what they intend them to be for, and we're just happy that we were able to do something that was able to fill an immediate need and also have a lasting impact for the district. As always, we have our kind of keystone, our key events that we focus on in order to be able to drive the funds that we are able to provide to the district. And so we still focus on our two signature events as a primary means of raising those funds. With the 2020 year, as I've kind of affectionately referred to it as Corona Guide in 2020, these events look a little bit different than what they have looked like in the past. You may have seen posts from our walk run that took place over the summer and saw that that was a virtual walk run in nature, but we were still able to raise funds that were able to go towards our mission. And so we're presently evaluating what that means for our annual gala, but know that that is still planned to happen. It just may not look exactly as it has in the past. And so as always, just want to share with you a reminder that those things are coming. We're always looking for volunteers or participants in our committees and for the plannings of these events, or just attendees. So please, you know, do what you always do, which is spread the word of what we're doing far and wide. We're always looking for anybody who's passionate about the work we're doing to help be able to chip in and make sure that we have opportunities and just the ability to continue to provide to the students. And this is an update that's really short and simple. So to stay up to date on all of our upcoming events, obviously, we encourage everyone to visit our website, stay tuned on our social media site. And just again, thank you for your time, for your effort, and for your partnership as we continue to try and do what we can to help support our students and our educators in this community. That's all I have.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your work, for your commitment. It would be easy to slow things down in the midst of all this, and EFW has ramped things up and we stepped forward, and we greatly appreciate your energy for that. I know the EFW Ball may be a little bit different this year, but I'm sure it'll be delightful and I hope others get a chance to, when we're back in at the zoo or wherever it is and that you may choose as your location, is a fantastic time. I hope folks come and support the organization, get to know some other members of the community, and do good things for the kids. So thank you for everything you do. Questions and comments from the board?
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you put in, and thanks for the amazing gift that you made to the district and Nissel specifically. I know you put in a lot of work, so thank you for all that you do.
Our pleasure.
Any community comment or questions on this report?
No hands raised.
Is there anyone who wants to pop on and just clap?
Dr. Jess Baker, if I can just say a thank you as well. I think it's important to understand the EFW is a volunteer board, similar to our school board, which is a volunteer board elected, but all those people put in time for one thing, and that's to raise money for our kids and our teachers. So just want to add my thanks, and I know they put a lot of time and effort and energy into it, and the gift of $30,000 for Chromebooks was completely unexpected and has been awesome. So thank you.
Thank you to you and all of your colleagues in the EFW and to members of the community for looking for a great way to get involved and to give back. This would be a great group to join. With that, we will move on to our next update under superintendent reports, the school opening update from Dr.
Thank you. This is the first of several just kind of updates of how things have been going for the opening. So we were in the second week of the hybrid model and phase into learning as well as TOAST Connected and WVA. Overall, the feedback we got in the past week has been extremely positive. Teachers I know have made comments about being able to create relationships with smaller groups of students was very positive in that regard. I haven't heard a single complaint from any students about the rules and regulations, I think overall, and maybe our students, the board members can attest to this, but it seems like everybody's really excited to be back to school and just wanting a sense of normalcy, and that's been real positive as well. It hasn't been without challenges. We know that, and we know it's a process, and we're going to continue to grow and get better. And this is our first week with the asynchronous piece, and actually today being the first day with it. I know there are some pickups and some timelines that maybe weren't met today. We want to make sure we're going to continue to grow in that area and get better with it. And today, also, we had our first student case we had to work through, situation where there was a COVID case. And really, there's so many challenges when each of those come up and really trying to look at the contact tracing and what kind of impact that has across the school. You have a balance of transparency and student and family privacy rights. So each one's going to present a little bit different challenges as they come up, but we had one today, and I think we've dealt with it. Those are always hard calls for parents to get and for students to deal with and for staff, but as we've said, we know these things are going to happen. If we can manage them and mitigate them and make sure that the learning that takes place when students are quarantined can be successful, we want to keep growing in that area and make sure that we're doing that. The other thing, excuse me, Third Friday is coming up this week, and Third Friday holds a little bit different meaning than it has in past years. Ultimately, it's the same meaning when it comes down to revenue and numbers. We, part of the challenge we have, our students through our data management system are enrolled, and if they're in TOAST Connected, they're in two schools, and WVA, they're enrolled in two schools, so we're going to have to be working through all of that to make sure we get the accurate numbers. Our membership, which is our student enrollment with a little bit of a formula related to it, is what drives our revenue and our revenue cap, our state aid as well. It is, there is a hold harmless for a significant drop, but it's also on a three-year rolling average. So the ultimate impact of a drop, which we're assuming we're going to have somewhat of a drop, that's just me kind of basing it on pretty much statewide, how everybody is looking at it. Hopefully, it's not a significant drop in students, and we'll know more. We're going to have to work through a number of different things to get those numbers finalized, but that's a big day this week. People try to act like we need the kids in, it's nice to have them in school that county, but as long as they're here a day before and we expect them to be here a day after, they're going to count for us. So more information on that to come. I think also, related to revenue purposes, one of the things we were targeting with some advocacy is trying to get our federal government to backfill and support public education. It sounds like that's kind of hit a wall in Washington, DC. We did meet with Congressman Sensenbrenner this week and shared our concerns with him about that. And also, I had some contact with Senator Johnson's office, and that seemed to be, that seemed to be a positive conversation, at least they were. I felt like in Senator Johnson's office that they were hearing our point and had some understanding of what we're dealing with as a school district. So really appreciated the feedback through that office. And lastly, I just want to say I really appreciate everybody's flexibility, patience as we continue to work through these challenging times. And, you know, we want to make sure we get it right for our kids, and we want to get it right for our families and for our staff, and we're going to keep pushing to do this right. I don't think there's any one right way to do it. We're doing what we think is right for Wauwatosha, and we're going to keep working on it and adjust as we need, as we go forward. I think we're going to have an update also on our medical advisory. We met with them this past week just to have some conversations without any kind of decisions or recommendations at this point. I know I got to lean forward, and most people can usually hear me. So we're going to, we're going to keep working through, and I just really want to say thank you to everybody for their patience as we try to do it right.
Questions and comments from the board? Jamie? I don't know what we need to do. Can we get the other board members back up in here on our screens?
When they speak, they'll show up.
Any comments or questions?
I just want to give a shout out to the families for doing a great job of preparing kids to walk into the schools, which might have been scary if, you know, they were little or they're in high school, and to the teachers who did such a great job of being transparent and honest with students about why these new behaviors are so important and doing it in an age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate way. So you had littles talking about airplane arms or helicopter arms so that nobody is, you know, within a certain distance of them. At the high school, you had teachers like, oh, and hand washing songs. I heard a lot of hand washing songs that I enjoyed. And then at the high school, there's also like this respect for like, here's why we all have to walk the same direction in the hallway, and here's why, you know, I'm going to ask you if you washed your hands after lunch, in a respectful yet really clear, I'm not playing kind of way, which I really appreciated. Like, I did not see one kid goofing around with their mask. You know, there's, you know, the one kid that had their mask like this, as soon as you said something, they were like, oh, I'm sorry, it keeps sliding down, you know, I got to fix it. So I was just, I don't want to say I went in expecting problems. I like sort of went in like anyone, like, okay, what's this going to be? But was so impressed by teachers and students and building staff and custodians. And at every school I was in, you saw multiple people walking around with spray and rags. So it just felt like it's really complex and we're trying to make it happen. So just kudos to everyone for doing the work. And like I said, parents too, for getting kids out the door and trying to send the messages as to why we're doing what we're doing.
Other comments or questions from the board?
Dr. Erdl, one question I had, I know we've talked about kind of feedback loops being available, and you talked a little bit before about different ways families, students will be kind of gathering information. Any update on kind of anything, kind of where we're getting some feedback from different folks or different ways people can share?
Yeah, to start with, first of all, anybody can and certainly are welcome to email and call with feedback, but we're going to do some thought exchanges. We just met today and discussed, Sarah and I did, we're getting hold of, get contact with thought exchange, get some of their ideas and questions. So we're going to get some of that out real quickly. And we want to get feedback from students, from staff, and from families as well. So we're going to be starting that this week.
Awesome. Thank you so much. If there's no other board questions or comments, we can move to community comments or questions on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Our next item is an update on TOAST Connected, one of our virtual options in the district. Welcome back, Mr. Carter.
Good to be back.
Long retirement.
Folding up my glasses here, I'm in trouble. I think I've been up here more now that I'm retired than when I worked here. Just want to start off by saying thank you for giving me a chance to give an update on TOAST Connected. I just want to say, I'd like to start off by thanking the students and families for bearing with us, being patient and giving us a chance to pivot and change the direction we were going with TOAST Connected due to some factors that we couldn't control. Our building principals and staff were outstanding. They were able to work together, put together a program and offering so that our students could get the things that they needed day one. They were able to organize more than 120 teachers to be able to offer those classes to the students. Also, 1,300 students had their needs met day one. That is outstanding. We had teachers that stepped up in various programs like chorus, band, orchestra, and said, okay, even though we don't have the numbers to offer a course in this, we still want to keep our kids in these programs. So what they did was, they went to their principals and said, hey, can we do this to keep them in here? Can we put them involved in lessons on Wednesdays? Zoom them in, can we put them in a Canvas and have them exercise? Get a hold of the exercises where they can play and send those back to us and we can critique them, get them back the information. So that was all done on a volunteer basis. We have foreign language did the same thing. How do we keep our kids involved so they can get to the highest levels of foreign language? Library media specialists have been outstanding, organizing resources, making sure that our kids and families get everything that they need. Building principals sharing staff, they work together, all elementary schools, middle schools work together, high schools work together. To come up with one offering, not an east offering or a west offering, but one offering to all schools. I reached out to the principals today and asked them how things went on day one and two. And we said what went well was, guess what Dr. Hertel said? When the kids came back in the building virtually, everything was all right. They were so happy to see each other, students, 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 teachers. Our teachers were very happy with the small class sizes so that they could do some of that relationship building with the students. And they said they were even able to help our students, give them a little more one-on-one attention when it came to working with some of the things that were a struggle for them. Things that didn't go well were just initial startup things. We have a brand new LMS, so Canvas, our kids are going to need a little bit of time to get up and get running. Those are the things that we're working on. There's some connectivity issues which are going to be tough for us to solve because Zoom, everybody's on Zoom right now. How to log in, those type of things. And communication was another thing they voiced that we need to work on. So they see that as an option for improvement, is making sure that we get things out to families in a timely manner, that students know where to go to get the information that they need to log in, and they're working on that. We had students that really were completely lost when it came to that and didn't know where to go to access that. So we've got to do a better job of making sure if a student's lost, they know, call that school, get that information right away and log in and get going. Next steps, we know we're not where we want to be, but we want to head in that direction. And what we're looking at is, some of this has already been talked about, soliciting feedback from students, parents, staff, administrators on what do we need to do better? How are things going? What can we do to improve? Developing opening lines of communication between all stakeholders. So there's a list, you know where to go if you have an issue, if there's a problem, where do we go? Planning for transition points, that's a big one now. We know we have the metrics coming up, the decision in October, that's going to do, make some changes for TOSA Connected. We also have trimester at the elementary level and semester at the high school or secondary level. So we are in discussion and conversations and planning to figure out what do we do when those times come, when those times come with TOSA Connected, how does that affect it, how do we keep moving forward? We also want to continue to build teacher capacity when it comes to best instructional practices regarding distance or virtual learning. What can we do to help those teachers continue to have that high student engagement? I think if you looked at the information that we showed you, it was 97%. I was, you know, very proud to see that. We want to keep that all year long. That is outstanding. So we want to see if our teachers can design lessons that will, kids are going to want to log in, they're going to want to be there and participate. Our students, excuse me. We're also creating protocols, policies and guidelines to support our best practices and also make sure our students are safe and where they need to be, when they need to be there. And we're looking at other resources to support best practices and instruction. I've been working with Mr. Price on new technology and things we can get for our classroom teachers to kind of help them and support them when it does come to engaging students and making sure they can access learning when they need to. So after three days of learning for Cohort A and two for Cohort B, things look pretty good. I suppose we're very happy with the way things have gone. We just need to tweak some things and keep our eye on the future.
Questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for all your work. One question, and I don't know if you have the answer tonight or not. So for our families that are on TOSA Connected, and like you said, teachers have been doing a great job building those relationships even virtually. Do we know yet what happens to that, those teachers? Do the students get to keep their teachers if we go from a hybrid to a full in-person, five-day-a-week? Or is there a teacher shuffling potentially there? What does that look like? It's a question I've gotten from many families and they're wondering that and I don't know if that's worked out yet or not.
And I know that question as well, we haven't finalized that yet. We are working to figure out what that looks like when it comes to five days a week. Is it live streaming? Is it keeping the same teacher? Is it more staffing? We're in those conversations to figure out what that looks like. So we haven't made a final decision yet.
Is it reasonable to assume we'd have that information by when we vote?
Very soon.
Potentially next time. I just think that's an important piece for the board to understand how it impacts our families and what that looks like for the students. So I appreciate that. I didn't expect you to have an answer tonight, but I think as we go forward, I think that's important.
There's definitely going to be shifts and there's definitely going to be a lot more live streaming with cameras in the classrooms. I mean, I think that's going to be, you know, a realistic part of that moving forward. I think we're going to work through, like Mr. Carter said, we'll work through all of it and get a plan finalized for the whole board, certainly before we would have a recommendation to shift. Thank you.
Something I just want us to make sure that we're considering, and I know we can't be doing too many switches, but for those students who would be having a teacher change if it wasn't live streamed, if it wasn't like, would we consider, you don't have to answer now, letting those folks go back into phase N? If it's the difference between having to lose the relationship that they've built over the course of the month versus, you know, if they're staying live streamed, I feel like that's very different than saying to a child like, oh, this person that you just, you know, built this relationship with, okay, they're gone, here's someone new. Like that's where I will struggle as a board member.
Suron, Meyer?
Sure, I'll go, if that's okay. Great. Thanks again, Mr. Carter, for the report and update. I guess my main concern, I mean, I've got a lot of concerns, right, obviously, you know. But have you guys thought about how much time we're going to be giving families and the staff? Like how much time is necessary to make sure that the staff is ready for a switch? Knowing that they already went through a big change and then we'll be asking them to go through a big, you know, change again. Do we have a sense of how much time is necessary to get them coached up on whatever plan we just? You know, it's difficult for me to have a question because I don't really know what it looks like yet, right? But I guess is that part of your calculus is making sure that time is built in before we make a switch? And really knowing how much time is necessary to feel ready?
Well, with the first switch in October, I mean, that's, that's, that's going to happen quick. We've got to come up with that information right away and now the plan, we don't have time to wait. We've already talked about, we had discussions about trimester and semester and how much time is needed then to make those changes. Also, for parents to make decisions at trimester and semester time. And then what ends up happening is basically go back to another staffing season, depending on the shift in students and where they land, phase in the learning TOSA Connected or WVA. So it's got to be done, it's got to be done early, but with this first one, we've got to do it as soon as possible. Trimester, semester, trimester, October, semester, November, December.
Yeah, I guess I mean with the shift, if we're moving right from the hybrid to the full day and just what, how that shows up in a teacher's life and how much time they might need to just sort of take that in and think about how to shift their day-to-day? Like do we have a sense of like how much, I don't know, lead time we might need to give them to be able to make that shift effectively, so it's not so clunky in the process?
I think one of the things we've said since the beginning is that at a minimum, two weeks. I mean, that doesn't sound like a whole lot, but as we've gone through and when we look at data and the discussions with the medical advisory of saying we wanted to make sure there's at least two weeks notice before any kind of upshift, I think that was discussed at the board. So that's kind of the minimum. You know, part of, part of the challenge that we face is that we have a whole lot of people that got into education without the interest desire or training to go into a virtual or distance environment. So to get, like, it's going to be an ongoing process and it's not accelerated. We just have, it's going to be an ongoing challenge as we move throughout the year and getting people to grow in that area. And that's going to be part of that conversation and part of that discussion if, when and if we recommend a shift, whether it's based on the metrics or organizationally, are we prepared to be able to do that?
I have a question. Sean, were you completed? Okay, I would like to know more about TOSA Connected and how it is being delivered, like say in the elementary classroom at one of the schools. Would you be able to give me an example?
There's a, in every class there's a schedule and it's broken down by content area and they call it same content area so that families are all together when they're teaching. Like for example, first grade student and a fourth grade student in the same family, they log in during that day, have their morning meeting. They're having math, science or social studies together at the same time. And it's, their day is broken down into a schedule. They log in, get their essential learning and then there's time for them to work with their, with their teachers, with the students and also work asynchronously. So it just depends on what that day looks like, what is broken down as a schedule for every single class.
And approximately how many hours are in the day for the TOSA Connected?
Depends on grade level.
Okay.
Lesser amount of time for the, for the younger children at the high school level. It's up to half an hour, seven times, it could be anywhere from three to five hours a day.
Okay, so three to five hours is about, okay, is that elementary school?
No, that's high school. By grade level, so kindergarten would have less than first and things like that, it just depends on the grade level.
Okay, so the lower grades are having about three hours a day, up to high school, they may have five hours a day. Actual online classes with a teacher.
Synchronous learning, right?
Okay.
Where from two to five hours.
Okay, and then school, family, then you may have multiple children at different grade levels and they can, are they learning together? Or are they still by grade level? So if I have a first grader and I have a fourth grader, what, what does it look like? Do I log in at the same time with them or how does that work?
Because that comes, you're logging in with, you're logging with your teacher at that time. So first grader logs in with my teacher, my fourth grader logs in with their teacher, they're learning at the same time though.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's helpful. It just, it gives me a bit of a understanding of, you know, how it's working. And, and so the in-person classroom teacher is not doing TOSA Connected? Or are they doing TOSA Connected? Or is it a mix?
It's a mix. Some teachers are only doing the TOSA Connected, some are doing phase in the learning and TOSA Connected.
Okay, and we, so do we know how many students are, I mean, are, you said 97%? I heard you say that, so we still have about 3% of families where we're trying to figure out if we can get them connected? Is that what I understand?
I would imagine yes. I just saw those, the results today, so I didn't have time to focus on those. But I'm sure that this, reaching out to those students, making contact individually, to see if they can get them to log on. And that was what we did in the fall as well, spring, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think that's an ongoing process. Yeah. I was just wondering too, overall, if I could better understand, and this may be a question I can ask for an answer later, but what I was thinking is, if I could understand how many, how many of the families that chose the method of learning are actually in that method of learning or did they switch? Or, you know, do we have, and I guess maybe that comes with Third Friday enrollment, is that when I would know that? Based on where we were when they requested that model of education?
We're all in the model they requested.
And they are participating? So that's my question, are they all, if they said they were going to be in-person and they were in Cohort A and Cohort B, did they actually come to school? And then if they said they were in TOSA Connected, then they actually go to school? If they said they were in Waluata Virtual Academy, did they actually go to school in the last two weeks? So that's?
Yes, they have. Short, short the, the 3% absent rate for TOSA Connected and the 4%? Can't remember what it was. I mean, the typical absences for, our absence rate actually looks really good for in-person. Really good.
Yeah, I mean, based on the information that we're receiving, it does seem like we're being able to manage the illnesses if there's a particular outbreak at a certain time. And I, and the reason I asked the question about, does the same teacher teach the class that's TOSA Connected? Because if, if that educator for some reason would be quarantined based on whatever is happening in their live classroom, what would we do? Would we have then a substitute for those families or how would that work? I'm assuming we would, I don't know.
Well, I will answer that. So they would, it could be a combination of a couple of things. If the teacher is home and the students would be coming in school, we can have it done through Zoom and the teacher would have, just like this, be on a screen and conduct class that way along with the teacher's assistant in the classroom that we would hire to be in there. The other, the other way is if the students are quarantined and the teachers quarantined, that's obviously a Zoom method or if the students are in the teacher's school. Yeah, so I think we have that situation starting tomorrow with the family situation that we had today. So it'll be our, our first attempt in dealing with quarantine. Actually, that's not true, we did with Longfellow, so, but with an actual student case, first one that we're dealing with.
Well, and I do think it's very good to talk through this sort of example because I've been getting a lot of questions. Well, what if this happens, what would we do? And, and so I think it's important to know that if someone is quarantined, that does not necessarily mean that they're ill, correct? So it sounds like even if they're in quarantine, they're able to work and that, the determination we're making, correct?
As long as they're healthy enough to be able to, to, to work. If they're sick, they're sick. Yeah, that's the determination that we make in discussion with the staff.
And then we modify the classroom and whatever we have to do at that time and, and that everyone can be learning as best they can learn, real time with that information, right?
Correct.
Okay, there's no lag, like there's not a day goes by. I mean, if, if it's discovered one day, they, you're, you're responding immediately, correct? So if there's a situation, you're responding immediately, we're not, we're not waiting, we're responding. We're making sure we have staff available so that we continue to class the next day, correct?
That's correct, sorry.
Sometimes when you're not in the room, it's a little difficult to know. Thank you, thank you. Those are, those are some of my specific questions, just about how, how is everything fitting and working together? And how are we responding to the illness and, and how are, you know, how are people doing? So it sounds like, you know, obviously we have some gaps that we're working on, which is a similar, similar thing to how we started this year. And, and you are addressing them as soon as possible. So just like you're doing, keep us updated. So just like you're doing, keep us updated, keep me updated, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Justin Bangor, I've got a couple of follow-ups, if that's okay? Thank you. Just back to the, the technology and knowing the, I guess, the thought process behind the video streaming. What are we doing to just sort of, I don't know, develop best practices now? Are we reaching out to other districts who like are already doing video streaming to understand what their best practices are for high school, middle school, elementary? Are we testing, you know, any of the technology now in elementary, middle school, high school, just different classrooms to get a sense of like where, you know, cameras should be, audio, how that'll work? Like are we, how much of that are we testing, you know, as soon as possible? Because I can just see that being a big deal to get right.
We are already using cameras in some classrooms at all three levels right now. So the live streaming is going on in certain areas. For example, to make sure all of our students could get certain classes at the high school level, like an AP course with not enough enrollment, we got those students live streaming in with the actual AP teacher in class. So it is going on now, they're working on that. We're developing guidelines and trying to figure out what's best practice in live streaming. As I do research on this, there's not a whole lot of that out there right now because it isn't a common practice. I think it will become. I even gone to the university level to see if they had some examples of how they operate. But it's something we are working on at this time and they are right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm especially concerned, it's not the right word, but just, I guess, flagging, especially with the elementary level. You know, I think the high school students are probably similar to college and there's some track to run on there in terms of video streaming and paying attention and things like that. What I'm curious about, and if, you know, if there is as much track to run on as like that, that elementary level, especially the younger elementary level, their ability to, to track a teacher over an entire day. You know, I, I'm just curious to know if, if there are schools that are utilizing this technology at that level that we can begin to benchmark at, or if we feel like we need more help on that. You know, are there people, are there parents, are there school board members who should be reaching out to districts like that just to give you a hand? I know you guys like have a lot on your plate. How can we, and how can others be helpful to you to service, surface those kinds of examples?
One of the things we discussed as a group is talking about essential learning when it comes to those live cameras. So it's not a seven and a half hour live feed where you're sitting all day long watching those teachers. It's teachers figuring out what's essential for those, those students. We know their attention span is short, so we want to give them impact fifteen minutes. If that's all their attention span can handle, they log in during that fifteen minutes, live stream in, get their lesson, watch their group, and then they work. You know, we have to work on developing ways for them to ask questions and those type of things to get their needs met. But we don't want it to be a seven and a half hour sit and watch that whole class. What's essential, what do they need, and then have them get to work.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be more than happy to sit and listen regarding people who might be specialists in this field.
No, and I don't know either, right? So, I mean, if there are things that, you know, I just don't know if there are. But, you know, if I can be helpful or if others can be helpful to try to find, you know, any schools that are really trying to specialize in this and just send that information to you, is that helpful? Or do you just like want, I try, as a school board member, right? I'm trying to like tread the line of, you know, give them space because they've got a lot on their plate and wanting to help because I know that there's a lot to do. So what's the right thing for a, a person like me to do for you?
If you come across someone who, because I'd be seen as a valuable resource to this school district, I would say send that to me. That's, I'd love to call someone and talk to someone about it. That's not a hindrance or anything else either.
I think the other thing too is we have a number of districts around us that are a couple of weeks, several weeks ahead of us. So, you know, I, I could get a number of things. So there's districts around us that are full, full in-person, there's also others that are streaming. This is their sole method of virtual learning. So I think there's, there's some, I don't know if I'd call it best practice, but there's practice out there that we can run from. And we've been in good contact with our neighboring districts as well, so we'll be using that. But any information anybody has, we'll take it. Sean, you want to continue your line of questions?
No, all of that, thank you.
Thank you. I know one of my takeaways is, so we have spent a lot of time really thinking about medical advisory panel and kind of the safety capacity of whether or not to kind of model for us to be. And I think, and I know, I think Sean, if you had to give your questions is our operational capacity, the board needs to take into consideration of what phase to be in. And I think that, when we've been thinking about operational, now maybe me, of the, we didn't know how these were going to play out. And as we learn more, we'll have more information. So it's, it's a more nuanced and complex conversation, discussion, how the different modes of delivery that we have. TOSA, TOSA Virtual Academy is a little bit different, it's being delivered by a whole different set of educators. But for the phase in and the TOSA Connected, knowing that they're really tied together in some complex ways, that we've gotten, I, I would, I will be certainly thinking about whether or not the, moving out of hybrid into another phase, how it affects our ability to deliver really good educational outcomes. So, you know, make sure that, that we're kind of thinking about that and making sure that information is good. That for me would be really helpful, because I think for, because I think we want to hit that sweet spot to remain the best education to as many kids as possible for as long as.
One of the things we talked about was not having this be, not being shortsighted with this meeting. We put this together for a few months and then it goes away. But this is our opportunity really to have this be something that is lasting. You know, we, we end up coming up with a model that works for students that we don't lose any instructional time anymore. So now we have these opportunities where if I'm sick at home, if I can log in, I log in. Before this, if you were sick, you just played at home, watched TV, played video games. But now these classes are live and it's something that we're not losing instructional time due to illness or family vacation or anything like that. You can log on, you go to Canvas and get your assignments, no more snow days.
Your total buzzkill.
It is.
All the kids at home listening are not happy.
My kids literally this weekend said, there's not going to be snow days anymore. I'm like, probably not.
Or virtual snow days. It'll be home, but it'll be learning. But I think that, if you look at it through that lens, I think that's what we're trying to build here. Not just the short-term fix, quick fix, but something that really changes the way we offer a variety of education opportunities to our students.
One of the things that I'm thinking about, and we've talked about this a few times, is for, regardless of which of the learning modalities families have chosen, I think this is a great time to be, for us to do whatever we can to be over-communicating. And I think the district's been figuring it out and it's, as teachers figure it out, it would kind of get better. But I know there's just a lot of, I mean, all of us are experiencing trauma and anxiety and there's just kind of layers as we're trying to figure all this out. In some ways as a parent, when you drop your kid off at school, you know learning's happening. And now you're kind of there and you're wondering and you're watching it and it's anxiety inducing and like, how can I help? I don't want to help too much, I can't actually do your homework for you. But with each little glitch and everything else, I know the, the parents and the, the students and the teachers, everyone's doing their best. So I think there's one giving each other grace for it and getting feedback and constantly looking for ways to improve. I know we're committed to that as a district. But then anywhere we can over-communicate, and if there's teachers who are particularly good at this, sharing those models. I'll just toss out, older city's third grade teacher last year was Wyman, she is like a guru of communication. So there's just some people who are uniquely gifted by it and really during a pandemic shine in their communication. And I'm sure there's dozens and hundreds of teachers all across the district who agree to that. So thanks for all you're doing, I know this is hard, we're making this up. Not quite as we go, but a few weeks in advance of as we go. And we're no different than any other district in the country. Any other questions from the board or comments?
This, this is both for TOSA Connected and for opening Phase Into Learning. I'm curious if you or Teresa, if she's here, can give an update on our students with IEPs and how that is working?
I think that, is that going to be part of our max?
Awesome.
Great, it'll be a better. Thank you for a preview.
Any community comments or questions?
Yeah, we have a couple. Forgive the pronunciation, Sam. Sam Pilow, I have to promote you to panelist temporarily. You have the microphone. You'll need to unmute yourself. And we still can't hear you. Okay, Sam, I'm going to put you back in the queue.
I did it, sorry. It's my daughter's Chromebook, so I'm trying to figure this out, I apologize. But my name is Kristen Pilad, I'm at 2323 North 117th Street. I just wanted to thank Mr. Carter for mentioning the communication piece for TOSA Connected. I was hoping to maybe recommend a central hub for communication for TOSA Connected parents. It's just been a challenge in the last week. My daughter's homeschool is Montessori, but her TOSA Connected school is Whitman. And then she's also doing class at Longfellow and then also does gym with WBA. So we've been getting communications from the district, from the three different schools, and then also with her five different teachers, which has been, I'd really rather have more communication than less communication, but it's just been difficult to weed through it all. For example, she has pictures we signed up for, for Montessori, and then she had supply pickup at Whitman and then Longfellow, it was up to the discretion of the teachers. So these were all different emails that we were kind of trying to weed through. And then some, some of them I've been getting, some of them my husband's been getting. So it would just be helpful if there was maybe a link, link on the district page for TOSA Connected. So just by two cents, but wanted to thank everybody for their hard work.
Thank you, that's a great, great comment. It's amazing the amount of communication that's happening and the amount of the challenges that it is a parent to, to now get through it all. Kudos to you for taking all the time to figure all this out.
Okay, next is Chris Herman, please state your name and address, and you have the mic.
Hello, this is Matt Herman, 2426 North LaBeaver Avenue. So, you know, we have two kids in elementary school TOSA Connected. We've been very happy with teachers so far. I think that's off to a good start. The, the communication though has been a little bit disappointing. Most of the communication we see from the school is about the kids in Phase Into Learning. And that when there's TOSA Connected information, it's at the end of the emails. So I'd like to see a little more focus on that as a distinct group within the school. Also, you know, we chose TOSA Connected on some very limited information back in, into July, beginning of August. We've come back and the models changed once. We show up tonight and we find out in October, our kids may have different teachers or they may now be live streaming in an in-school class. That is not at all what we signed up for to begin with. We were hoping for something that would be consistent because that's a big thing that our kids need, is a consistency of knowing who their teachers are, what their schedule is, what to expect day to day. This has been really disappointing and every meeting I'm coming to, it's feeling like the information is just getting worse and worse as we go. This was an option that the district put out there. They haven't been able to fill and it's continuing to erode. At what point are we going to get consistent information that we can count on for the school year? That's my question.
Okay, next is Bridget Brown. Bridget, you have an older Zoom client, so I have to temporarily promote you to panelist.
Great.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm on my Chromebook for work, so I hope it doesn't cut in and out a whole lot because it doesn't like Zoom. Bridget Brown, 2440 North 66th Street. Kind of echoing the same things that the previous speaker just put out there. I want to be sure that the district is making an equitable plan for how TOSA Connected students are going to be educated for the duration of this, and especially if the phased-in approach moves to five days a week, which honestly, I don't see how that could even be a consideration right now, seeing how the numbers are going in the state. But I'm truly concerned that what this is going to look like, and for me, it's at the elementary level because that's where my kid is. Right now, my second grader is loving TOSA Connected. She really likes her teacher, we're one week in, and it's going well. She's got a schedule, it's going well. But if it switches to her sitting and watching her peers who are in person with a teacher, getting the teacher's full attention while she's sitting here at home, I don't understand how that could be considered equitable at all. For fifteen-minute lessons and then as a second grader, she's just supposed to go off and do her work without a teacher coming and checking in with her? That's not going to work, that is not an acceptable path of education for my child or any other elementary child, and really not for middle school or high school students either. I don't understand how that would be a plan where she would be able to keep up with her in-class peers. It's just completely an inequitable plan and not pedagogically sound. So the district really needs to make a better sustainable plan for these TOSA Connected kids. Like the speaker before said, the plan for our TOSA Connected students has already been drastically altered. Watching classes from home, live classes while their peers are there and they're at home, would leave about twenty percent of the students in the district, the ones who are assigned up for TOSA Connected, behind, I think. So this really needs to be a focus for the district, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, we have next Paige Brown. Could you state your name and address? You have the mic.
Hi, my name is Paige Brown, I live at 2513 North 90th Street. I am actually a teacher at McKinley and also send both of my children to the framework right now for the hybrid learning. I have some questions that are surrounding some of the live stream options as we continue to evolve the TOSA Connect and with different classrooms going into quarantine for different reasons. One of them is, how are we ensuring the confidentiality rights for all kids who may be having a hard time at school? Protecting my own children for those times when they might be having a little bit of a breakdown because there's just heightened anxiety and trauma that's happened with the pandemic and life is certainly not back to normal. Sound is still on, so even while a video may only be on me, which I circulate my room almost all day long interacting with my students, how do I ensure that those rights for all of my kids are not, you know, they're, they're intact? That we are creating this space at the elementary level for kids to make mistakes and to be upset or work through whatever they need to socially and emotionally. And lastly, how are you ensuring that kids that have those lawful IEPs that get provided speech and language services, that have different touchpoints with their IEPs, that, you know, those teachers, everything is pushing into my classroom? How are we protecting those rights of those students? Because again, sound is on, you can hear who is coming into my rooms. For staff members, you can hear what children are speaking. So I guess as, as we evolve the live stream for elementary students, those are questions I have and they're, they're tough questions. those are questions I have, and they're tough questions, but I think they're super important for keeping the integrity of what elementary learning should look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Paige, no, sorry. The next one is Katie Pond. Please state your name and address, you have the microphone.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Katie Pond, 270 North 115th Street. I will start by saying, myself and my children started with the hybrid model at Underwood, and it has been wonderful, we are all so happy to be back. I kind of want to, I guess, go off of what Paige was saying about the in-class five-day live streaming, and I'm wondering about assessment, and if that's been thought about. A lot of what happens, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, in my classroom is, you know, based on student discourse and checklist and taking running records and things like that. And I don't, would I not be doing that with the TOSA Connect kids? Or how would that look? Or would they just be getting my short lessons and then going on their own? So it's just something to think about in how it's going to look in elementary. I'm particularly at kindergarten, but I know kind of across the board there.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay, that's it, no more hands raised.
Any other follow-up questions from the board?
Dr. Jess Banger, just one other thought from me, I guess, is just a curiosity for Mr. Carter. Can you just share a little bit about the team of people who are working on this TOSA Connected plan? And does it, you know, I'm thinking about, right, the initial group of stakeholders that was building out the public health plan, and then all of a sudden it kind of felt too small, and maybe there should have been a wider, you know, more diverse group of, you know, stakeholders, opinions, et cetera. I'm wondering if we're, if we're going to do the same thing here with TOSA Connected. So I'm just curious, do we have, you know, enough parents, educators, you know, others who are helping you to build this out? I don't know who those people could be right now, because they're all, I'm sure, very busy. But, you know, how can we make sure that it's a diverse enough group? So there's, and all those specific questions have answers as soon as possible.
Right now, the group that we have working on this are building administrators and directors. They're building at the building level, working together. We don't have parents that are part of the committee making the decision on this, or helping to build this model.
Okay, yeah, I guess as it evolves, and we've got a couple weeks, I don't know if it would be helpful for, you know, just to have a quick focus group of, you know, the stakeholders who might be able to reveal something that just was like, oh, we would have never known that if we didn't have a parent at elementary or middle school or high school, or a staff member at elementary, middle school, high school, not just the building leader. I'm just trying to think of the committee of people that could, you know, make this as good of a plan as possible, as quick as possible, knowing that sometimes we add more picks than the kitchen takes more time. So I'm careful about that, but at the same time, maybe it should be a more diverse group.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Thank you, Mr. Carter. I appreciate your time and your effort. I hope you're enjoying your first six months of retirement.
It's very good so far.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda, continuing the superintendent reports, is our equity plan update. And there is a component that is fairly little focus on students in special education.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me, and to see all the persons face to face in the three eight fuzzy green screens. We keep short, sweet, green trees with all the.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to start first, just to kick off with our new teachers. We had our new teacher training the third week of August, and that day started off with Dr. Erdl, just grounding the new teachers in everything that we do surrounding around equity, and just making sure that we hammer that message home, that if we're not looking and operating and working and teaching and learning through an equity lens, then we're not doing anything right. So that was a great message from Dr. Erdl to kick off the year with our new teachers. And then later that afternoon, I provided a little more detailed training with our new teachers on just how we frame equity for the district and what that means, and how do we live and breathe it? And then also with the teaching and learning sessions and student services trainings throughout the week, equity was a centerpiece for all of that. And then moving ahead in the week with staff opening day, keynote speaker Jonathan Grant Brown was with us this year. Dr. Jess Banger was there to help introduce him, and I'm not sure who all was there as well, but it was a fantastic kickoff speaker, one of the best that I've sat through in my 15 years of education. And he really focused on equity, building community, and relationship building. And what was unique and exceptional about his focus was that he actually gave teachers and staff practical strategies and key takeaways to utilize in their classrooms and how to bring those things alive, and making sure that they are focusing on authentic relationship building. The messaging, again, for the entire district was just that equity is not optional. It's everything that we do, and it's a responsibility of everyone, which is moving us toward this idea and this reality of we have to build collective equity capacity. As it relates to the equity plan itself and its execution, to start the year, there has been a hyper-focus and emphasis on belonging. We have our three themes in the plan, we have opportunity, belonging, and achievement. And belonging became that primary access point to begin the year, and working with our students and also our families and staff members, working with each other too, on making sure that we are building empathy and leading and working with grace with one another, knowing the challenges that we were faced with in terms of bringing school back to being open. In particular, equity coaches, I've had the pleasure of working with them so far, and they are all fantastic. They work really hard with teams and individuals to elevate in hands, teacher capacity for relationship building and empathy building, and providing them with tools and resources and ways to do that in a virtual way and a hybrid way. And our teachers and buildings and school sites have been equipped with some really unique and forward-thinking ways to do that work that is student-centered, that is identity-centered, and focused on high expectations, but also with high support and grace. I've worked with the principals in particular and other admin in our district on just ways about how to lead in courageously with this work and how to make sure that we are not working against silos, but really working to tear down those walls and making sure that we are using the collective expertise within the district to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to receive students and families well in a way that's safe, that's secure, and that makes them feel special and connected to what we're doing. And then on the student services side a little bit, working with Michelle Anderson and Lisa Winters and Mike Kurowski on changing the language that we use in terms of how we're coding attendance and how we're coding behaviors. We've started to execute that attendance piece so far, and we're working to make those changes and updates as relates to the behavior codes and how that's framed in a way that it doesn't invite bias in a way that it doesn't invite relationship breaking and forces teachers and administrators to rethink how they interact and engage with kids when some of those things would occur. And then looking at it from a big picture and a system standpoint, Sarah Fertitta and I have been working really hard on messaging and communication and framing the language that we use, and making sure that we're engaging in common language across the district so that you're not hearing equity one way in McKinley and then hearing it differently in Longfellow, but making sure that the language is common and that it's being used and lived in a way that's consistent across the district. Huge kudos to Michelle Anderson, just because of her ability to just manage, collect data, report data, disaggregate data, and present it in a way that's some of the best data reports I've seen in many districts that I've worked with, and looked at their data reports. What Wawa TOSA has is just phenomenal, and that's a huge credit to her. So I'm looking forward to working with her a lot more on that. Dr. Nikita Nul is someone else that we have utilized in the last couple of years in working with our staff and building administrators. Previously, the work has been around bias and microaggressions and some identity work, and really working on building, engaging in reflective work and definitional work. And this year, we're working towards shifting to behaviors and practices and making sure that the thinking, the beliefs are showing up differently in how we practice and work with kids, and that our actions are not mired in work that's biased, that's representative of limited understanding, and that's representative of a lack of relationship building. So I'm really excited about the work we're going to do this year with Dr. Nul. And Reggie Jackson, Frank Kaplan, they will be back this year with us to do some additional work. As it relates to me, in general, just I've been really engaged in a district-wide review and critical analysis of where we are with relationship to equity. And what I discovered is that the foundation has been poured and set really well. And so in lighting it to building a house, I think we are at the phase now where we're ready to frame and wall and improvise some insulation in some of our structures, and looking at framing this out in a correct way in every corner of the district, and then building the structural and institutional capacity for this work to thrive and flourish. With administrators here, we're going to be engaged in a book study, Coaching for Equity Vital in the Aguilar. A new book that was released last month, and it's really fantastic. She's done tremendous work in the past as it relates to equity and coaching, but this is some really forward-thinking and groundbreaking literature and research that she's put together for schools to utilize, and not just schools, but any organization. So I'm extremely excited to get to work with our administrators on that piece. And lastly, just a quick note of thank you to a lot of our parents and families and community members who have reached out to thank us for a lot of the work that we've done so far this year in the summer and in the last few weeks on equity, the messaging and communication, and how we've worked to really affirm and identify and really support all of our kids and their identities and backgrounds and cultures. And from that, I will hand it over to Teresa for the special education update.
Thanks, Stacy. Thank you. So the Wawa TOSA School District currently has 906 students with disabilities that are enrolled in our district as of last week. And of those 906, 47 of them are enrolled in the Wawa TOSA Virtual Academy. 153 are enrolled in TOSA Connected, and the remaining students are enrolled in Phase Into Learning. As you know, a big component of special education is the paperwork aspect. So our staff have been working with families to update all of our necessary paperwork to make sure we're in compliance. What this means for our students enrolled in TOSA Connected or WVA, it's a review and a revise of an IEP along with the change in placement. In these situations, you need to look at the goals that's in a student's IEP to make sure that they're still relevant in that virtual situation, to make sure that they can be measured in that virtual situation. And then look at your special education services to see if there needs to be any modifications or changes to those based on the virtual placement. For our students enrolled in Phase Into Learning, it doesn't require an IEP revision, but for every one of those students, we're creating distance learning plans for each student that describe how they're, what kind of services they'll get in the multiple phases. So their IEP reflects that five days of instruction, and then the distance learning plan will highlight what services a student would have when we're in the other phases of hybrid or virtual. For our special education services, our general service model is a model where we do co-planning and co-serving to support our students' success in both general education curriculum and general education classrooms. This is a collaborative model where special education and general education staff plan together. So to support this, all of our special education teachers did participate in the Canvas training. Our special education teachers are then assigned as co-teachers to the classes, the general classes that they're supporting, and they collaborate and work with the general ed staff to help develop and develop those courses and provide support. For our speech pathologists and our occupational therapists, and then all of our special education assistants, all of them completed the Passport to Canvas course, which is a course that students take to kind of orient to Canvas. And this will kind of, this will allow those individuals to support students and their accessing Canvas and learn how to manage the materials and resources in Canvas. In addition to our collaboration with general education staff, our special education staff have dedicated weekly collaboration time in their schedules where we can address topics that are unique to special education. We can share resources, discuss new tools that are available. Now that our students are back to learning, our special education staff have been reconnecting with students both in-person and virtually. Currently, our priority for students that are enrolled in both Phase Into Learning and TOSA Connected is really to support that student access to those general education classes. We want our students with disabilities to participate in all those learning opportunities where they're learning logistics, learning about Canvas. We also want them to be a part of that community-building opportunity. So that's what our focus has been these past few days of school. Another priority for our special education staff is to assess students' abilities to access and navigate Canvas. So we've asked all of our special education staff to pay close attention to that as students are learning how to navigate the learning management system. And then our special education teachers and speech paths and other service providers will also start collecting baseline data on students' IEP goals, kind of assess where students are returning to us. Due to the number of students enrolled in TOSA Connected, we've, I've been working with Mr. Carter, and we've posted two elementary special education teacher vacancies in TOSA Connected and hope to fill those soon. For our students in TOSA Connected, they also have the opportunity to decide if they want to receive any therapies in their IEPs, either virtually or walk-in. So our speech and language pathologists, OTs and PTs are working with families to sort through that. And then finally, we've shifted one, we shifted, oh, we've also shifted some special education resources to support the students that are in WVA. So we're shifting them from our county grounds programs to the WVA program. And then we've also added two speech pathologists this year. One was actually planned to be added pre, it was recommended that it would be added pre-COVID just to meet the growing caseload demands. The second one was added specifically to student service that are in WVA, because that's a different curriculum, so we wanted one dedicated speech pathologist to support those students. Just a few other fun highlights that, to kind of highlight some of our work around specification and equity. September is actually deaf awareness month, and we have an interpreter for one of our students in the district who thought it would be helpful not just to share some sign language resources with that student's class, but share them with all the teachers in the building, thinking about in this world of masks, this might be a good opportunity to not just build exposure around deaf awareness, but also give students another opportunity for communication. And then one of our equity coaches actually shared it with all of our staff, all of our elementary school staff across the district, the teachers. Our special education staff did participate in that elementary ELA training to ensure, again, that access to that general education curriculum. We started resuming special education evaluations in August, and we were able to complete all of our outstanding early childhood. and we were able to complete all of our outstanding early childhood evaluations and over 40 speech and language-only evaluations so that we could have those services in place for students at the start of the school year. And then we have some new resources in the district. One example is our speech and language pathologists. We purchased visualizing and verbalizing for elementary schools, which is a reading and listening comprehension, memory, oral vocab kind of resource. So all of our speech pathologists that work at the elementary level were able to participate in some professional development this past spring virtually so that they can use that resource. And then for our middle school and high school, we've purchased some additional math and ELA resources for our students that are using alternative learning standards through attainment. It's a company that we work with frequently for that population. So those are just a few highlights.
Questions from the board? So I just want to thank you both for presenting tonight. I know these times would be pretty easy to sort of gloss over Equity with all that we have going on. But I also think that this is a great opportunity to test ourselves. Are we really looking at everything through an Equity lens? So you being here tonight tells us that we are, you know, moving towards that direction. So I appreciate it. One thing I'd really be interested in and hearing about is the board is going to have difficult decisions coming up as far as, you know, when you vote on, you know, what mode of learning should we be in? Should we be back to school? Should it be virtual, whatever the case is? But as the two of you kind of realize things that maybe we're not doing that are equitable or different situations affect different populations, you know, please, you know, bring those up to the board, to the district, you know, to whomever. We really need to hear those things because we don't know, we don't know. And I know one thing, there's quite a lot that I don't know. So really looking, really looking for you to really help us understand that, you know, this is going all kinds of issues forward, right? And we have now cameras in the students' homes and, you know, what does that look like? This pandemic affects, you know, black and brown populations different than others and why is that? And, you know, how does that impact our students and our families? So, you know, please, please bring those forward, even as we vote or, you know, have a discussion in our next meeting. I really look for any thoughts or ideas that the two of you have that, what aren't we thinking of that we should be? So please continue to do that and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
So the distance learning plans are for students with IEPs that are in Phase Into Learning. So is this for the two days when they're doing asynchronous work? Or do we have special education students who are coming more than just the days in their cohort?
A little bit of both. So the distance learning plans, what they do is it's an addendum to the IP where it talks about when we're in hybrid, this is what their services would look like versus when we're there five days a week, which is written in the IP versus what it would look like for 100% virtual. So it just kind of describes the different services that a student would receive during each one of those phases. We don't need them for the Tosa Connected or virtual because they're only in that virtual experience. So their IEPs are written just for that virtual experience. And then to answer your other question, we do have some students that are coming in for some additional services outside of their IP. We're following the DPI guidance. The DPI guidance has given us six months to determine any need for additional services. And they, they, their recommendation and expectation is that those decisions are made on a case-by-case basis using data that we have available about a student. So they also, in their guidance for additional services, they talk about prioritizing those students that struggle the most with accessing the virtual services. So we identified who, we were able to identify some of who those students were and we've started, we've allowed, in those situations, IEP teams to make decisions about them coming in on days outside of their cohort and just working and receiving special education therapy, speech therapy, or specialty design instruction. So they're not touching the other cohorts. They're working just with that special education staff that they work with when they're in person. And the other advantage of that is it also prevents them from being pulled out more during those cohort days. We want them to be with their cohort on those cohort days. So it's another way to service them without doing any kind of pullout.
So it's more inclusion in cohort time and then pull out during the alternate days?
Right, in most cases. And in some cases, IEP teams are making even different decisions. Like for some families, they're choosing for their students on cohort days to just be engaged in special education and not be involved in like switching classes at the high school because of health issues. So really case-by-case basis in all those situations.
Yeah, making it really easy, I'm sure.
Yeah. Scheduling special education teachers gift.
Yep. And then my other question is, is you mentioned the additional services. So I know DPI put out the, like it's 2001 or something and we have six months. And is it that the district determines that? Or it can parents say like, this is the additional service that I think my child needs? And like, how do parents advocate in a way that is beneficial to the student and also realistic in terms of our ability as a district to respond? Because the most important student in the district is your student. And so I want to make sure that parents feel like they can advocate for their kid and understand that we've got 906 kids with IEPs and we need to meet all of their needs, not just your kid. So what is, what is the process for additional services? What can parents expect realistically versus ideally?
Yep. You know, as far as in the end, those decisions will happen within the context of an IEP meeting. And it really, again, DPI, I think that they provided some really nice guidance for districts and we continue to work through our CISA and with the Department of Public Instruction on how to utilize that document to make it meaningful for our families. But really, DPI is pretty explicit about there has to be, there has to be evidence to inform the decision. So what we're looking at is we'll start looking at, that's one of the reasons why we're starting to benchmark IEP goals is to kind of see where are our students returning to us? So we have some data pre-colder, we have end of the school year data that we can look at. Now getting some baseline. And then what we're, what we'll be looking for is, is that student, you know, what is the significance? First of all, is there a regression? What is the significance of the regression? And is that regression so significant that without an additional service, a student may not ever have that opportunity to catch up? Or is the student's new learning experience this fall, over time, are we starting to see that students recover, recruit, grow, those kinds of things? And really just using data to make those decisions, data related to IP, not just IP goals, but overall just classroom performance.
Okay. And then I just think the final comment that I would make for both of you and it applies to everything else we've talked about tonight is communication, communication, communication. Like I even as a board member had a question today about my own kid that I, you know, I was comfortable emailing the superintendent where as much as Dr. Erdl says anybody can email him, there's a lot of parents who don't feel comfortable doing that. So I think if we can all just make sure that we are continually pushing ourselves to better communicate clearly, concisely, effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
I have a question. Ms. Kwiatkowski, thank you very much and also thank you for the diversity report. But I specifically want to ask about the special education students and how that is going with the cohort A and the cohort B? And are there other models for the special education students that you're looking into?
So based on the couple of days of school, when we've had some, we've had, I mean, with the niceness, I've been out in some of the schools, been able to interact with a lot of the special education staff. Overall, I think that it's going, it's going well. Our students, our staff are really focused on making sure our students have that opportunity to be a part of those general education experiences. And then I'm not exactly sure when you ask about other models. I mean, the students with disabilities have the opportunity to be a part of any one of the three models the district has offered. I think that that was our big goal, was to make sure that parents had that opportunity to choose. And then another question that we had come up several times was those questions about if I choose this model, Tosa Connected, can my students still get their speech services? So we made that available so that families who wanted in-person speech services or OT services were forced into Phase Into Learning. So we tried to be flexible with the models we have. And then in the end, kind of going back to what I was sharing earlier about, you know, IEP teams making decisions. We have some students that we've currently prioritized with where IEP teams are making decisions for that student outside of the model. So an example is for some of our students may just be coming to school on both cohort days at the high school, but not attending any of their in-person general education classes because parents want to limit the context they have with other people. So only in, that's an example of us, we have, we have a few families choosing that for their high school students that they just want them coming to their building for specialty design instruction and special education services. And then all of their general ed services and supports are done asynchronously. Does that answer?
Yes, and then just one other, one other question that I had. If the students are in cohort A, can they also attend cohort B?
No, they can come into school. In some situations, some students are coming into school on cohort B day, but they wouldn't be doing the general education class because they've already done that and they're supposed to be doing the asynchronous stuff. So some of our students with disabilities, this might answer your question a little bit more. They are getting some direct special education support during their asynchronous days. So while they're not coming in, they're getting some direct special education support during those.
Okay, thank you. That does.
Yeah, we wouldn't want them touching the other group of students. We're trying to manage that exposure.
And then just to clarify, there are no students in person on Wednesdays?
Correct. There's no staff in person on Wednesdays either.
And no, yes, okay.
But again, to follow up on it, while there's no students coming in person, there are some students that will be receiving some direct special education support on Wednesday with some of their learning activities through like a, either a small group or a virtual specification kind of reinforcement Zoom meeting. So a student could get special support on a Wednesday.
Okay. Great, thank you. And then the only other feedback I have gotten is of course with making sure the documentation and that the educators themselves are comfortable knowing how to complete that documentation. And I, and I did receive information that that was all taken care of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any final board questions or comments? Thank you both very much. I know we've lost one chance for any community comment or questions on this.
There are no hands. Oh, wait, somebody did raise a hand. I'm sorry. I believe this may be Deb Palick. If you could state your name and address, you have the microphone.
Thank you. Yes, it's Deb Falk-Palick, 7435 West Wells Street. Thank you for the report. About a month ago, I did ask, we were contacted by our principal offering us to come in as a family of a child with a disability on our non-cohort day and follow certain classes. And they would actually overlap with the lunch period too. And I had asked if there could be, because this model was not presented to the board and was not a model that the board had approved, I had asked if the medical advisory panel could just evaluate it, give it some, give some guidance so families can really understand that this was looked at. Thank you, Dr. Jessup Banger. You provided me guidance to reach out to Dr. Erdl and district staff. So I guess I am today again also to, to just ensure that when there are these different models being presented and that the, or that weren't presented to the board, that the medical panel can look at them and review them so that families can make good decisions. And even though there may be small numbers of students that this pertains to, each number does represent a real person, a real child, a real student, a real family. So that's very important that we do. The district learning plan, we did get ours today. I have so many questions on it. There've been families, even right now as we speak, texting one another about this, going, I didn't get mine, when will I get mine? What does this mean? So I'm not sure if there can be some kind of presentation or something that can share with all families to learn about this, just to be more efficient with staff time so we're not individually all asking questions. I loved Mr. Rollins' comment tonight about diversifying voices and I can't remember exactly what he was referring to. I think with parents being involved. And perhaps a suggestion would be to have a special ed parent at the high school level, the middle school level, the elementary school level, to be able to be a connection for other parents, to bring forward what's working well, what are some ideas that could work better for our students with disabilities? Or, you know, I think Mr. Allen, maybe you were talking globally here about diversifying voices and having parent voices heard. So those are some of my comments and I thank you all again.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next is Jen Janowski. If you could state your address, please. You have the mic.
Sure. Thank you. This is Jennifer Janowski. I'm at 2609 North 90th Street. Just a couple of comments. Thank you for the time today and thank you, Therese, for the presentation. Just, I have about four things that I want to just touch on. I thought I heard you say that revised IEP would not be needed for a student that was in Phase Into Learning. And that's not clear to me why that would be the case. If a student is going from what would be five days of learning down to two with asynchronous being the other part, there's a substantial change involved. So I would, I would expect, and I think many of the parents that were communicating with are expecting some change to the IEP to, to account for that. It's very, very different for the student who is used to being in person. And then as Deb Palick just mentioned, some understanding around when the distance learning plans will be in place. I think that's sort of part two of that first question. The next one is the additional services. I know you mentioned that the DPI, and I read this as well, that the DPI has six months, or allows for us to have six months to respond to the additional services needed. I, I hope that we're starting to address that now and not waiting the six months. I would, I'd like to understand when that clock started and if our plan is to wait six months before we start the assessment or are we going to be done with the assessment at that six months' time? And what that's going to look like at the end, some guidance on that. The third comment that I'd like to make just echoes, I think, one of the board members' comments, communication, communication, communication. I also read the DPI guidance and one of the pieces that it did say about special ed in particular was it really, really focused on proactive communication. And I think Deb Palick also mentioned, we are craving that communication from a special ed community perspective. And I would echo her request to have some sort of parent forum where we can be more efficient and have the information shared with us and ask those questions together so we can all learn from each other and from you all. And then the, the final comment I'll actually skip, it's not probably worth it. So thank you for the time and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is C. Cernak. Cernak, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Nicole Cernak, 6203 West Wisconsin Avenue. I echo some of the things that earlier people have said. I think I have an autistic son who is in Tosa Connected because of medical reasons from beyond just our family, but into our extended family. That really limits our, needs to limit our exposure to other people. So as far as making a choice whether he was going to be in-person learning or whether he was going to be home, almost wasn't a choice for us. So I think those things need to be noted too, that there are some kids who, while we recognize it might be better to be in school and to be receiving those services, that's not possible in some of, some of these cases. And so the other thing I wanted to remind people too is that is that a lot of these kids who are getting special services absolutely live by schedules, by consistent, consistent schedules. And I realize in the time that we have now, consistency isn't something we can always count on. But to make these kids successful, some of the things that we need to be almost more focused on special ed kids needing this kind of consistency and watching out for that in their lives. So while it might be easier to flip a classroom or to have them go online, we need to make special, have special thoughts about kids who can't make those switches that easily, who can't make those, you know, who take a long time to make transitions and things like that. And, and what can we put in place to prepare kids for that? If things are going to need to change, or if things are going to be different than what, what was expected or what was anticipated? How can we have forethought about preparing those kids for that? And then again, I echo some of the earlier comments as well about some parents, representatives at different levels in elementary and middle and high school, to really be sounding boards and to bring a forum for play, for parents to have questions and to be able to bring some comments forward and some ideas forward to, to the board and to individual schools. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that was it. There are no one, no more raised, no more hands raised.
President Jessup Banger, may I speak, please?
Yes, sir.
In line with the requests by the families here about, and board input on the communication, 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 to cite Mr. Rollins' focus group idea, to cite parent suggestions for including special needs parents on advisory panels. Could we, can we maybe set a timeframe, like seven days, 14 days, where maybe on the, you know, the frequently asked questions part of our return to, you know, school webpage, that we answer that question, what, what, what are we doing differently now? Or what are we proposing to bring the board? Maybe we don't have to bring anything to the board. Maybe administration will implement something or propose something. Can we have a frequently asked question answer on, on that information site that specifically says what we're going to do or what we plan to do to address this communication request?
Mr. Meyer, specifically thinking around the topic of special education.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, I'm sure there's maybe other things as well, but specifically to that, that the, the request that we improve something. And I'm kind of a practical action person. So, okay, well, if we agree with that, what, what could we do? Tangible to structure an improvement in this. And I don't, I'm no expert on specifically how to do it. But just so we, in a tangible way, reply to, so here's what we did. We thought about this, here's what we did. Here's what, here's what we're adding or changing or modifying. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
One of the things that I mentioned earlier is when we talked about thought exchange and getting feedback from all of our constituencies. And we certainly are not going to exclude our, our parents of students with disabilities. And I think that's, we can do some additional outreach in specific to our parents of disabilities and get more specific feedback. So that's something we'll work on.
And one of the things I thought was a really great idea that Sean presented is there may be some really creative problem solving. And it could be on any topic. I know we've gotten, teachers are coming up with great ideas, administrators, directors. There's no shortages of great ideas. Now implementing all of them during a pandemic is challenging. But I think, you know, like wherever we can do that, if you can do some thinking around, I think, this specific topic, if there's an opportunity for this community of families, to maybe some additional opportunities for feedback outreach or whatever it may be. I know a lot of this is really focused on the specific learning. So it's the relationship between the special education team, different service providers, the teachers. But if there's maybe, I think, an idea of Mr. Meyer, and I think you, of kind of like, how we're going to do that with you. I would ask that we do that. Thank you both. It's nice to see you in person.
Thank you.
I like your, well, it was a mask too. That's not one I've seen. No. This is very cute though. He's holding out on me particularly cool. You got one of those too? I got the generic. First I was excited, no, I'm glad. It's totally mad. Next up on our list is an update on the Medical Public Health Advisory Committee. Mark is going to share a little bit on our last meeting as well as Mr. Dome. Support that as well.
Okay, the Medical Health Advisory Committee met on September 9th. At the meeting, we reviewed the dashboard that's posted on our website. We're meeting every other Wednesday for the rest of the school year. Our next meeting is going to be September 23rd at 7:00 PM. And at that meeting, more of you the dashboard and then reported back to the school board on September 28th.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it was generally this week, a meeting on, going through the dashboard, what it was all about, but also kind of talking about some of the nuances of collecting data and how you analyze it, makes, you know, what Michelle talked about tonight. Are we really doing apples to apples or highlighting some of the challenges there are in collecting data? Which is why I brought that up. When Miss Banger answered your question, that oftentimes it's not just, can we display the data? It's can we collect it? Can we actually compare equally and, and all those types of things? So again, we have an amazing committee and they bring all these perspectives and shared experiences that we're really fortunate to have. So no decisions are, you know, big, big topic changing discussions this week. But really just kind of how are we continuing to move that forward? And, and making sure that we're collecting the right data going forward. So if you have questions or there's things you'd like to see, please, you know, bring those up. Happy to, if you want to send them to me. And, you know, we can vet those out. Does that make sense to, to discuss going forward?
Questions or comments from board?
So to Mr. Rollins' comment earlier, if we are having our board meeting on the 28th, changing on the 5th, if that were to be the recommendation, would only be a week of prep time for teachers? So we've said the new would be on the week of the 5th. So would that become the week of the 12th?
So we are looking at scheduling a special board meeting if dated on the 24th to give it a little bit more time. But I think that's all going to be part of the discussion if there is a recommendation. All of that's going to.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that we do give.
As well as the medical advice as well.
Yeah, okay.
I think this really, my, my new point is that we want to give the staff and the families as much of the time.
Yes, I agree.
Minimizing, is, we want to minimize as many shifts as possible as we go. And I think the advisory panel has stated that as a value there as a priority. And not, and our staff to do things that they simply cannot do.
Yeah. But going back to communication, I think there's a lot of parents that have October 5th on their calendar with a big red circle around it in terms of that may be the day things change. So I think as soon as we know whatever it is, if it's on Thursday, the 24th or whatever, the faster we can be prepared to communicate, whatever that is, the better.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, as, as we go through this process, I think we're all learning things that, you know, maybe where it was three weeks ago or four weeks ago was the metrics will tell us where we should be. But starting to realize there's a lot more to it. What, what can our teachers handle? What can our families handle? All those types of things. So I know that's going to be part of the discussion too. So it's not 100% what does our medical committee say, but what are, what are, what are our district leaders saying is feasible? And how do we really meet the needs of, you know, our students and our families? So that's kind of why we're, I want to push the discussion a little bit tonight of making sure that's part of our discussion when we meet on the 24th or 28th. You know, what's feasible, how does this impact Tulsa Connect and all those things. And just to reiterate what Dr. Manger said, we may have an emergency board meeting scheduled for Thursday, is that the 24th this month? It's been sent out to the, to members of the board, kind of an availability check. So I've not checked in with her, but I'll check in with her to make sure if it's available. A little bit easier now that we can do virtual or in-person. But that would be a possible date that we would be meeting on and off Monday. So just in the heads up on that, more on that to come in the next, next several days.
Other comments or questions on that item from anyone? Any community comments or questions on this report?
We have two. Somebody with the screen name of Tammy. You have the microphone. Please state your name and address. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Joe McLough at 772 North 116th Street. Few comments, questions. Looking at the parameters for returning back to full in-class, there are two parameters currently that are preventing us from doing that. I don't remember what segment, the first one being caseload. We're looking at cases throughout the state of Wisconsin versus the area where we should be looking at, which is the Wauwataosa area. If we're looking at the Wauwataosa Health Department website and looking at all the trends, if we apply those parameters to our data, we'd be all green. We'd be ready to go as far as that's concerned. A lot of the problems that we're having could have been prevented if we had gone back to class five days a week as we had originally intended. The Elm Brook School District, larger school district than ourselves, our neighbors have very successfully gone back to school five days a week. If they can do it, there is no reason why we should not do it. It seems like we're trying to find reasons to keep students out of the classroom where we should be actually trying to find reasons to get them back in the classroom as quickly as possible. We need to change our focus and focus on getting students back where they belong, back in the classroom.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next, Deb Falk-Palick, you have your hand raised. I'm going to allow the talk again, but if you're not speaking, please let us know.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I had my hand up.
Yep, no worries. We have no more questions then.
Thank you all. Thank you. I know Mark is on that group, Mr. Dome and Dr. Erdl. There's possibly some other folks in that room who are doing a lot of heavy lifting. Thank you to everybody who is doing in a lot of additional work. I'm going to keep saying thank you to the advisor, the Medical Public Health Advisory Panel. We could not be doing this without you. So thank you for your expertise, your guidance, having some really hard conversations. I had a phone call from a community member today who said she was really happy to hear what she was hearing about some of the conversations of the medical advisory panel, that they are not all in agreement, that they come in, they listen to each other, they have some really vigorous debate. And she made, that made her feel a lot better, that, that kind of folks are really digging in and really having some thoughtful conversations on it. And I, I hope what the community sees through all those processes, the district trying to find ways to educate kids to the best of our ability in a really difficult environment and to do it as safely as we possibly can. So thank you for everybody who's been contributing to that group. We can't do this without you. And Dr. Jessup Banger, I'd just like to make sure that we aren't putting out bad information, but our metric data is not based on state data, but it's on community and local data. I think that's important to say because that was not a true statement.
Thank you, Mr. Dome. That is our last superintendent report. We have a final opportunity for public comment on any non-attend items.
There are no hands raised.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Dome. We have a second.
Second? Mr. Dome?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley? Yes. Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Mufo?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Banger?
Yes. And we are done for the evening. Thank you all much.